Good evening. I would like to call this meeting of December 11th to order. Please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Kate for a roll call. Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Beth Coughlin.
Here.
John Noons. Thank you. So to begin our meeting, what I would ask is that we've allotted to our agenda. It's a little bit in the middle, but we're going to go a little out of order at the pleasure of the committee. And anyone who is interested in a public comment, to please stand up to the podium and just share your name and any comments you have with us.
Good evening. My name is Renee Viera, and this is my colleague Jodi Parisi, and we are the co-presidents of the Dartmouth Educators Association. And we'd just like to say that last year, we all knew that this year would be tough financially. Yes, the end of S R funding. Yes, increased costs for supplies and utilities as well as bus transportation. However, our buildings did not just age overnight. Our newest school is over 20 years old. Upgrades of building systems are difficult and often more expensive because much of the equipment is obsolete. The whole community needs to understand that for years, Dartmouth has done very little in increasing our per pupil spending. Towns that have higher tax rates spend more on their students and in turn receive more state aid. Town politicians complain that the state doesn't do enough, but if we don't invest in ourselves, why should they invest in us?
Central Office has made mention of increasing class sizes as well as possible reduction in force. Dr. Sabah McGuire stated that the district needs to protect its most valuable assets, the students, and we couldn't agree more. In doing this, the Dartmouth Educators Association hopes that deep and thoughtful discussions are taking place with building administrators as well as other relevant stakeholders. After all, there's a wealth of knowledge and experience within the walls of our buildings. We do expect that the district will consider all positions within the Dartmouth Public Schools and not just those held by DEA members. Mr. Kylie stated that negotiated wage obligations are in reality more costly than the agreed 2% increases. While that is true, administrators and other non-DEA personnel have contracts and agreements that are more costly in actuality as well.
And lastly, Jodi and I have appreciated the conversations that Dr. Sabah McGuire and Mr. Kylie have had with us thus far, and we are committed towards helping the district move forward together, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great. I think at this point, I will move to accept a motion to approve the regular session minutes of November 20th and then a second motion after that vote for the executive session of that same evening.
I'll move to approve the regular session minutes for November 20th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. And again, the executive session for that same evening?
Madam Chair, I'll move approval with the stipulation that the minutes be held until the matters under consideration are resolved.
And I'll second that.
Right, your motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four to nothing. At this point, I will entertain motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of entering into executive session.
Conduct a level three.
Thank you. Level three grievance. And that's it at this point.
To return to open session.
To reconvene.
Reconvene into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Does this require a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Kathleen Amorall.
Yes.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Elizabeth Coughlin.
Yes.
The remainder of our open session here, December 11th. Kate, could you roll call?
Kathleen Amrell.
Yes.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Elizabeth Cofflin.
Yes.
Great, and I will turn it over to Dr. Sebman-Mobuyer.
So, we are going into the budget presentation, is that correct?
We are.
I just want to make sure we're on the same, okay. So, I guess the wrong thing would be to say I'm excited to, but I think it's important to preface our budget presentation with the acknowledgement that we are facing pressing financial matters that are truly affecting the heart of our educational mission. While we will discuss the upcoming budget tonight, again, we recognize that we are facing a challenging reality, a budget shortfall that demands our attention in collective problem solving. It bears noting that just the fact that we are presenting this budget on December 11th, at least two months before it would normally be done, demonstrates the seriousness of our situation. First and foremost, our commitment to providing a high-quality education for our students is unwavering, yet we find ourselves in a situation where our financial resources are strained. As we navigate through this budget presentation this evening, we want to emphasize the critical importance of the community's support in maintaining the standard of education our students deserve. In the face of this shortfall, we have worked diligently to identify areas where we can make strategic adjustments without compromising the quality of education. However, it is crucial, it is crucial to acknowledge that the impact of these adjustments will be felt, and the town's support is instrumental in bridging the gap. I urge each of you to consider the long-term implications for our students in their future as we discuss these financial challenges. Our success in overcoming this budget shortfall is contingent on our ability to rally the community's support, emphasizing our shared responsibility in shaping our children's educational landscape. We look forward to an open and collaborative solution to work together to secure this necessary support. Through collective effort and a shared commitment to our students, we can find a way to get through these financial challenges and continue to provide the high-quality education our students and community deserves. It is important to remember that this budget reflects the community's values and its support for its children, grandchildren, neighbors' children, friends' children, and even a stranger's children. This has implications for our future, and so with that, our team intends to highlight the positive ways that the Dartmouth School budget reflects the town's commitment to its children and its young people. And so with that, we're going to jump into our actual presentation, and again, this will be a team effort, so Ross, Katie, Laurie, they'll all be joining us at some point, they can come right up now if they'd like to, but we really wanted to present this in a way that demonstrates to the community that this is truly a team effort and the budget does in fact reflect the values that we place on the school community. And so we start off by talking to you about the mission of the Dartmouth Public Schools, which is simply to provide a quality education for all learners, and a lot of different things go into providing that education. As you know, we're in the midst of strategic planning, or about to embark on that, and I mentioned at our last school committee meeting that that becomes a challenge when we're looking at a budget where we're being asked to consider making cuts at a time when we're looking to actually add things to better support the Dartmouth Schools. And so our mission is simple, but our job is not.
So, last year, as Dr. Sebman-Mobuyer alluded to, we started in earnest developing a project of learner, and a project of a learner is a promise to the community, it identifies what it is that students can expect to be engaging in learning, and we frame our project of a learner, which we'll be sharing with the community for feedback, we frame it around five competencies, but it's important to note that, again, budgetarily, in order to bring it to life, we need the budgetary support to make that happen so that it truly serves as our north star and kind of guides our district strategic planning work ahead.
And so, as Ross said, we last year embarked on work with, in conjunction with Envision Learning Partners, to gather data from various stakeholders around the community, and with, through those surveys and school visits, data was collected.
Remainder of our open session here, December 11th. Kate, could you roll call?
Kathleen Amrell.
Yes.
Chris Oliver.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Yes.
Elizabeth Cofflin.
Yes.
Great, and I will turn it over to Dr. Seb Maguire.
So, we are going into the budget presentation, is that correct?
We are.
I just want to make sure we're on the same, okay.
Yep.
So, I guess the wrong thing would be to say I'm excited to, but I think it's important to preface our budget presentation with the acknowledgement that we are facing pressing financial matters that are truly affecting the heart of our educational mission. While we will discuss the upcoming budget tonight, again, we recognize that we are facing a challenging reality, a budget shortfall that demands our attention in collective problem solving. It bears noting that just the fact that we are presenting this budget on December 11th, at least two months before it would normally be done, demonstrates the seriousness of our situation. First and foremost, our commitment to providing a high-quality education for our students is unwavering, yet we find ourselves in a situation where our financial resources are strained. As we navigate through this budget presentation this evening, we want to emphasize the critical importance of the community's support in maintaining the standard of education our students deserve. In the face of this shortfall, we have worked diligently to identify areas where we can make strategic adjustments without compromising the quality of education. However, it is crucial, it is crucial to acknowledge that the impact of these adjustments will be felt, and the town's support is instrumental in bridging the gap. I urge each of you to consider the long-term implications for our students and their future as we discuss these financial challenges. Our success in overcoming this budget shortfall is contingent on our ability to rally the community's support, emphasizing our shared responsibility in shaping our children's educational landscape. We look forward to an open and collaborative solution to work together to secure this necessary support. Through collective effort and a shared commitment to our students, we can find a way to get through these financial challenges and continue to provide the high-quality education our students and community deserves. It is important to remember that this budget reflects the community's values and its support for its children, grandchildren, neighbors' children, friends' children, and even a stranger's children. This has implications for our future, and so with that, our team intends to highlight the positive ways that the Dartmouth School budget reflects the town's commitment to its children and its young people. And so with that, we're going to jump into our actual presentation, and again, where this will be a team effort, so Ross, Katie, Laurie, they'll all be joining us at some point, they can come right up now if they'd like to, but we really wanted to present this in a way that demonstrates to the community that this is truly a team effort and the budget does in fact reflect the values that we place on the school community. And so we start off by talking to you about the mission of the Dartmouth Public Schools, which is simply to provide a quality education for all learners, and a lot of different things go into providing that education. As you know, we're in the midst of strategic planning, are about to embark on that, and I mentioned at our last school committee meeting that that becomes a challenge when we're looking at a budget where we're being asked to consider making cuts at a time when we're looking to actually add things to better support the Dartmouth schools. And so our mission is simple, but our job is not.
So, excuse me, last year, as Dr. Seb Maguire alluded to, we started in earnest developing a project of learner, and a project of learner is a promise to the community, it identifies what it is that students can expect to be engaging in learning, and we frame our project of a learner, which we'll be sharing with the community for feedback, we frame it around five competencies, but it's important to note that, again, budgetarily, in order to bring it to life, we need the budgetary support to make that happen so that it truly serves as our North Star and kind of guides our district strategic planning work ahead.
And so, as Ross said, we last year embarked on work with, in conjunction with Envision Learning Partners, to gather data from various stakeholders around the community, and with, through those surveys and school visits, data was collected, analyzed, and categorized into these five major competencies. And then within these competencies, there are performance outcomes that outline specific skills that students should know and be able to accomplish at various grade levels. But as we talked about moving forward with our strategic planning, we need to assure that we have the funds and the, and the ability to provide the infrastructure to be able to attain those goals that we have identified, that the community has identified as critical components of what our students should know and be able to do. And I'm going to continue and just say that we've talked a lot, kind of in that vein, also about the importance of relationships in creating a sense of belonging for our students and our staff, and certainly maintaining manageable class sizes is an integral part of being able to create an environment that fosters those relationships, but even more so to be able to personalize and individualize instruction. And Ross, I don't know if you want to talk about that number, the 12.5?
Sure, so, you know, you can see we have manageable class sizes across the district currently, and again, budgetarily supporting that's important. We know that when we have manageable class sizes, the personalized support and instruction that our students need to thrive is possible, you know, but without that support, larger class sizes obviously leads to less personalization, as our teachers would have more students in every class. The manageable class sizes at K through five are 21, six through eight, the average class size is about 19 students. At the high school, it's a little bit more difficult to really let down because it varies from department to department, the class sizes, but across the district, we have a 12.5 to one student ratio. That is misleading, we want to be clear about that, because that 12.5 students to one teacher, it's actually 12.5 students to one certified staff member, it's not, so that encompasses counselors and other certified staff as well. And if anyone's thinking, well, that seems low, just understand that's above the state average. The state is 11.9 to one, so Dartmouth is a little bit above that at 12.5 to one, and I think that's an important distinction to make. I know that Mr. Kylie's going to talk more in depth later, some comparisons to the state and to similar districts, so. In terms of student achievement, this slide kind of highlights that Dartmouth more than holds its own in comparison to other like districts. These districts are part of what's known as our DART districts, and DART districts are just districts, we've talked about this at previous school committees, but its districts have similar, have similarly demographics to Dartmouth in terms of enrollment, number of high needs students, certain select student populations, et cetera. And you can see that Dartmouth, you know, more than holds its own, we're above, we outperform many of our DART districts, we outperform the state average as well. So Dartmouth, we do feel gets a pretty good return on investment in terms of student achievement, and this is just one, you know, M-CAS is just one measure of student achievement. Another measure is certainly our Advanced Placement Program, and we're very proud of that. We offer, you know, 20-plus AP programs. Again, that's not possible without significant support from the town, and it's important to highlight that the College Board has recognized Dartmouth Public Schools and Dartmouth High School for their commitment to excellence, and not just in terms of achievements, certainly that's the AP honor roll silver distinction you see to the, to the right, but also in terms of access, which I think is important, and perhaps probably, you know, the more important of the two recognitions here from the College Board, because AP access means that we're committed to making sure that all students have equitable access to our AP program, so that our AP enrollment actually mirrors our student demographics as a whole. Again, none of that is possible without the support, the continued support of the town. We also recognize though that there's much more to a student experience than just academics, certainly, you know, academics is, is the main focus, but we all know that students come to us because of things like athletics, and clubs and activities, and music, and our performing arts programs. These are the programs that all require, again, significant support, but they're also what enrich the student experience so greatly in Dartmouth. You can see just some numbers, again, athletics, we have 56 programs, that's 28 varsity level programs and 28 sub-varsity level programs. Over 1,016 students across three seasons participate in our athletic program. Some of our students participate in multiple athletics, but when you break it down for like unique participation, about 54% of our students at the high school level, and some eighth graders for certain sports, but 54% of our student body participates in at least one sport. In addition to that, you know, our music program, world renowned, I don't think I need to, you know, do any marketing for them because they are so well-known, not just in Dartmouth but across the country, but we have nine programs that service about almost 300 students. And then finally, clubs and activities, at the high school, there's about 42 clubs or activities that meet after school, where our teachers serve as advisors, it's areas that our students are passionate about, again, it just enriches their experience. And also, two years ago, we were able to offer for the first time clubs and activities at the middle school level. So we have all of these clubs and activities at the secondary level, but I know in speaking of the.
So I would say, I would be remiss as the Director of Teaching and Learning at the elementary level if I didn't point out the fact that there are currently no opportunities for our elementary students beyond the school day. And so we absolutely provide an amazing experience for our students, but I think we talk about how can we best serve all of our students. And so, you know, the elementary lover of me had to point out the fact that we are doing great work with our secondary level, and I would love to see that replicated at the elementary level.
And then just one last point, beyond enriching the experience for our students, there's also a lot of research that shows students who are connected to the school day beyond the traditional school day achieve at higher levels. It's why you hear things like get plugged in, or more recently with Mr. Shea saying the day doesn't end at 2:03. The reason for that is there's a lot of compelling research that shows students who participate in programs like the ones we offer are more successful.
Well, thank you, Dr. Seb Maguire, and Mr. Tipo, and Mrs. Piveo. So clearly, I think we've illustrated here that we do good work for kids. So before we dive into what we're asking for in our fiscal '25 budget, I think it's important to explain where we're starting from financially and how we compare to others. So, this, this sheet talks, basically it shows, illustrates our total per pupil spending, and compares us to important measures. So it compares us to the state, it compares us to our DART group, which is our 10 closest matching districts determined by the Department of Ed, looking at categories like low-income percentage, students with disabilities, and English language learners, determining who closely fits within our DART. And when we look at that, the, the district here in Dartmouth is 12% below the average of all our, of all the districts within a 25-mile radius, so there's 30 districts within that 25-mile radius. 22 is where we rank out of 30 in that, in that group. Our DART districts, we're right in the middle, almost average amongst that group in overall spending, but we're $2,800 per pupil less than the state average, so 14% less, and we're 266th of 322 districts in the state. Teacher spending, we're 3% below average as compared to our surrounding districts, so 14th out of 30, but a couple of hundred dollars less than average. Compared to the DART, we're slightly above average, 6% above average, we are third out of the 12 DART districts. And versus the state, we are 196th out of 322, and about $374 less than average, 5% less than average. Insurance and benefit spending, predictably, we are at the bottom of the 30 districts within 25 miles. We are 47% below average, $1,584.43 per pupil. Compared to the DART districts, we're 12th out of 12, 30% below average, $756.22 per pupil below. And the state, another $1,500 below, below average, 46%, we're 316th of 322 districts in the state. Administration spending, we are 33% below the districts within 25 miles of us, we're 26th out of 30. With the DART districts, we're a little closer to average, we're 11% below average, we're a 7th out of 12. In the state, we're 32% below average, 288 out of 322 districts. Operations and maintenance, so we are 29th out of 30, and 43% below average with our local group, 11th out of 12 with the, with the DART, 27% below average, 35% below the state average, 307th out of 322.
Starting to see a trend here, Mr. Kylie.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty evident. Pupil services, so pupil services just as a reminder, so pupil services are things like transportation, athletics, music, other student activities, nursing department also included in there. So we are 4% below the average of our, our districts within 25 miles of us, 16th out of 30. The DART districts, we're just a little above average, 5% above average, 5th out of 12. And in the state, we are just below average, 4%, 153rd out of 322. As it, as it relates to, as it relates to transportation, as a fairly large portion of the per pupil, of the pupil services spending, I think it's important to note that we are the third-largest community in Massachusetts, and therefore, we have a long way to drive every day, and I think that's kind of, you know, we're spread apart, and certainly that has an impact on where we sit compared to other districts in the state. So this one, I think, is also very interesting. So what we're comparing here is the amount of staff in each category, each of several categories that I'll go through, per 100 students. So, and we're comparing ourselves to the DART and to the state. So in teachers, paraprofessionals, leadership, student support, and clerical, we are lower than the state in every category. We are lower in, compared to the DART, in paraprofessionals, leadership, student support, and clerical, and just above average in teachers when compared to those DART schools. So you'll see here that, you know, we're not, we're not heavily staffed by any means, we're below-average staffed in almost every comparison. Again, another, the first sort of conclusion there is that you get very good bang for your buck here, but the next conclusion is we're really understaffed to try and do what we're, you know, what our strategic, accomplish our strategic goals and mission. So, now we'll actually talk about fiscal year '25 here. So, this is our proposed budget. It's fairly similar, the split in terms of the pie chart, we're 75% instruction, fairly similar to prior years. The next biggest category is other services or pupil services, which is, again, transportation, student activities, athletics, music. Falling next would be maintenance at about 7% of our budget, then out-of-district tuitions at 4%, and then administration at 2% for a total budget request of $54,664.691. So we'll talk a little about that, and how that breaks out. So, these are the different sort of larger categories, and what I will say is that the major factors impacting this budget are contractual obligations, transportation, inflation, including how it impacts our special ed rates for out-of-district tuition. So the instruction, that's general, but the instruction category includes funding for contractual obligations, it also includes incorporation of nine of the ESER positions. So as we know, we received about $5 million of ESER funding over the last several years, and that is coming to an end, and will, September 30th of 2024 will go away in its entirety, and we have incorporated nine of the positions into this, into this budget. Administration reflects increased cost of legal counsel services, funding for contractual obligations, and also some savings from not filling a position, the secretary to the superintendent position. Maintenance and utilities reflects contractual obligations and projected savings from some efficiency improvements that we've been doing, so we're happy to report that we have a very small increase in that area, mostly due to those efficiency improvements. There'll be other requests relating to maintenance and, that will be coming your way as we proceed through the capital improvement plan process. Other services reflects contractual obligations, but also increased cost of transportation, so our contracts are expiring. It's not a great time for contracts and transportation to expire, but probably won't be for a number of years, so sooner or later, we were going to have to face it. Our neighbors who are bidding out contracts right now, coming in extremely high. So I'm very concerned about that, but we're planning to bid it out in January and have, we'll have the number of what it's, of what it's going to be, at least at that point, for, for further consideration. Tuition, so the state sets the rate for inflationary increases in tuitions at 5% this year, so we've incorporated that into the budget. So again, actually, I have the wrong number there, but the total, surprised I didn't catch that, but the total budget request is $54,664.691. So some of the things that we are incorporating into this budget, some increases, some decreases. So, some we will talk about in more detail, so I won't, I won't spend much time talking about them. High-quality instructional materials, a defined need in this district that we'll talk about in an upcoming slide, $150,000. Technology, so to restore the replacement article that was eliminated in the last budget cycle, it's a dire need of ours, but we'll talk a little bit more about that shortly. Behavioral specialist for $80,000, an ELL teacher for $80,000. Funding for the Atlas 18 to 22-year-old transition program at the high school, it's been going great, it's our first year, we're, we're operating that program, we expect to have a significant increase, as many, as, as much as a, as much as double the number of students next year, so we need some additional funding to support that program. Unfortunately, this budget also includes some reductions, the reduction of two elementary teachers, reduction of a school nurse on the ESER, that was on the ESER grant, reduction of a teacher that was on the ESER grant, and reduction of the secretary to the superintendent. So the net total of those additions and reductions is $181,190.
Mr. Kylie.
Yes.
The teacher for 63592.
Yes.
Is that a specific school, or just, because I noticed you have elementary?
It's the middle school.
It's the middle school.
It's the middle school.
Okay. Thank you.
And we can talk a little more in detail about some of these.
So, so for the proposals.
So, so for the proposals, again, as, when we started to really talk in earnest, I think, about this budget, I think it was the day I signed my contract, no. But we started to talk about it, and really, what we decided as a team is that we needed to come forward to the school committee and to the community and ask for what we believed that we really needed to support the schools. And we couldn't come at it with just trying to make cuts to decrease our budget. And so we've, we think it's important that you and the community hear from us why it is that you have a line item that says "high-quality instructional materials." And so something that we know to be reality, we know this, this is, this is based in research, is that students must have access to standards-based, grade-aligned, high-quality instructional materials, and that, that is, in fact, a lever for educational equity. And so that is something that needs to really, truly be a non-negotiable here in Dartmouth. We know that strong selection of high-quality instructional materials is grounded in shared vision, informed by local equity priorities, and supported by diverse stakeholders. And Katie and Ross are going to talk about some of the work that they're doing to ensure that this, because one of the things we've committed to is still going through a process, even in the face of knowing that we might not be able to fund these resources, but we don't want to be standing still. We know that the power of high-quality instructional materials is amplified by effective educators, and we know that, again, we talk about shared vision and dedication to continuous improvement. We know that the implementation of materials through evidence-based practices that are inclusive and culturally, culturally sustaining will improve the student experience. We know that, and we know that we have to support teachers in the implementation of those materials. So when we start to talk about positions around instructional coaching and other positions that support teachers in the classroom, and the quality of professional development that goes along with instructional materials, we need to be really clear that that should, in fact, be part of a regular budget and a budget, a cycle, a continuous improvement cycle, that you're going to hear more about it. And I've already talked about professional learning, the coaching, and now Katie and Ross are going to talk about some of the work that they've been doing with the folks here, in the, the instructional experts here in the community.
So one of the things that we really made sure to put into place was a formal curriculum review cycle. And so in that review cycle, we're consistently reviewing and revising our curriculum, and part of that means looking at our curriculum materials. And the budget obviously becomes an important part of the cycle, because as we look at having to continuously assure that we have the highest quality materials in front of our students, we know that research-based curriculum ages out, it becomes newer and better, and as we learn more and do better, technology obviously plays a huge role in all of that. And we have to be fiscally responsible, where we can't just sort of let it go and let it go, and find ourselves in a spot where multiple areas of the curriculum need revision or review at the same time. And so that, that cyclical piece that our teams, at the elementary level, we have curriculum teams in all four core academic areas, and then the secondary level, Ross has worked with re-teachers by department, and so we're consistently looking at that. But we have to be cognizant and aware that materials cost money, and so we want to make sure we're putting, you know, high-quality, research-based materials in front of our kids. We have to have a budgetary focus on that as well.
Yeah, so the only part I would add is that by including this in the budget, it allows us to not only be transparent, but also strategic, right? As the high school principal for five years, prior to being in the position I'm in now, I can say that we haven't adequately invested at the secondary level in high-quality instructional materials, and so this is an important piece of investing, not only in our students, but in our educators as well, to make sure that they have the resources they need to do the job on a daily basis.
And I do want to just add that this will be incorporated into our strategic plan. And so we know that this is a need here in Dartmouth. There's, there's no doubt about it. It actually was one of the first things coming in as a new superintendent that I took note of. It was glaringly obvious that we hadn't invested in curriculum materials, although we did adopt a new math program, and Katie, if you want to just mention the implementation of that program.
Sure. So we did bring in, at the elementary level, bridges in mathematics. We were able to acquire that throughout the pandemic, and then the coaches really became an integral part of making sure that our teachers have the professional development they needed, because not only is it important that our kids have the materials in front of them, it's important that our teachers have the knowledge base to make sure that they can use those materials to the, to the most efficacy they can. So that PD part of it, as Dr. Seif McGuire alluded to, is a really, is just, is just as important, I would say, probably argue more important, to make sure that our educators have the background and have the information that they need, because a tool is a tool, and it has to be research-based, but the person who's delivering and using that tool has to have the, the background and the knowledge to be able to use the tool effectively. Thank you.
I'm going to invite Jonathan up to talk about operational and instructional technology.
I brought electronic versions of mine to demonstrate visually. When you think of technology, you look just under two areas, operational technology and instructional technology. When we look at operational technology, there's six people in the department, myself included, and we maintain all of the, the switches and network equipment, as well as the Wi-Fi, become essential as part of the learning process. The thousands of computers, the Chromebooks, desktops, laptops, printers, servers. We also maintain all the data initiatives, like state reporting and student information system, and pretty much any systems touch upon the data system, so they know what students log in as and their names and such. Also, thousands of other items, whether they be iPads, electronic whiteboards, or assistive technology devices all around the district, as well as maintaining a big, hot item, which is network security and security in general, when it comes to protecting from viruses, ransomware, malware, and such. So we have the systems that protect that, as well as the intercom system, the phone system, and the security camera systems, which keep an eye on things. We also pipe that through to the police department, so they can have eyes in the school, if necessary, to protect our students. When we look at instructional technology, it's really the core of educational technology now. The backbone is the operational, but the instructional technology, we have instructional technology specialists in every school. We're trying to fill one position at the high school. They cover things like digital literacy standards, computer science and such in the classroom, as well as digital citizenship, instructional practice, professional development for teachers. Really, they, they're there to support the investment we've made in thousands of dollars worth of equipment. I was the piece of that pie that said "other," like the player to be named later, that was Little Piece. And as Mr. Kylie mentioned, about the two-hundred thousand dollars, it's important to note that we have not taken, in my time here, we have not taken a bond out for purchasing technology. We've maintained a purchasing process, which I feel is a better investment, because it's able to, you're able to keep up with that. And that's what that, that two-hundred thousand dollars was, is to maintain purchases in electronic whiteboards, additional Chromebooks. The kids use the Chromebooks hard, they, they use them to the fullest extent. We talked about, Ms. Pfeo mentioned, the investment we make in software. These students are using it day and night, so they're great investments, and the Chromebooks they use, we, we try to maintain them and keep them up, fix them as they break, replace them as they needed. A few years ago, we were able to acquire an ECF grant, which was about a half a million dollars for Chromebooks, that was nice, and we're always keeping our eye out for that, too. Recently, Dr. Joe Biden had mentioned about cybersecurity money that's being available to Massachusetts, so we're keeping an eye on that, so we can enhance our cybersecurity. So that's what technology does, so I just wanted to share with you just a short synopsis of technology.
Thank you. Now we have Laurie Deniesio is going to come up and talk about another position that you saw, that of the behavior specialist.
So this is in a wish list. If it were a wish list, it would be far, far longer. This is a need we have currently in our district. This year, we're seeing a real spike in significant behavioral concerns, especially among our youngest learners. Since September, we've had to make four referrals to more therapeutic placements for students, because we just don't have the services and supports within our district to allow them to access the curriculum. Dartmouth is not alone in this trend. Across the state, lots of communities are facing this issue and trying to problem-solve it. Currently, we use a consultant when our building-based teams feel like that they have exhausted their own tools and strategies. However, this comes at a great cost, as consultation is usually ongoing. It's not a one-visit-and-done, it's a reoccurring, a reoccurring cost for us. So hiring our own staff would help us to build internal capacity and really support our students where they are in our classrooms, our students and our teachers, in real time.
And I just want to add that I noticed, when I was looking at last year's proposed budget, these were positions that were actually advocated for in last year's budget, and I'm hearing that there is truly a great need for this particular position, and maybe even more than one of them. So obviously, we're coming to you asking for one, just as, as a starting point, but one of the other things about depending on a consultant is you're on their schedule rather than ours, and I definitely have seen that that has caused just some, I would say, difficulties at the building-based level while we're waiting for somebody to, and the person is wonderful, the person who comes in, so it's not about their skill level, but it is about us having to be responsive to somebody else's schedule. And we all know that our students don't act on somebody else's schedule, so. And now Ross is going to talk about the ESL position.
So we are required to provide a free and appropriate public education for all students, including our multilingual learner students. So any student who's new to our country, or any student where English is not the language spoken in the home, they may qualify to receive ESL instruction. And so our students were the greatest need, those are our foundational-level students. The guidance put out is that they should receive ninety minutes of direct ESL instruction each day, and for our transitional students, those would be our students who are almost reaching proficiency in terms of English, those students should receive forty-five minutes of ESL instruction each day. Last year, you might recall that we advocated for an additional ESL teacher, because we weren't meeting those requirements, and we started, we were able to hire a fantastic teacher with several years of ESL experience, so we were in a good space, and then we increased from sixty-two EL students to around eighty-six currently. So we're fortunate that we added the ESL position, but we're kind of right back to where we were last year at this point, where we're not able to meet the, the guidance, the recommended guidance, and so adding another ESL teacher would allow us to do that.
Okay, so we wanted to just kind of end the presentation by bringing us back to who we are, and one of the things that we spent time just researching, studying, is who, who are the folks in the Dartmouth Public Schools? And you can see right here that the number of employees who reside in Dartmouth and work in the Dartmouth Public Schools equals fifty-two percent. So that's more than half of the faculty, of the staff in the school department, live here in the community, and they have a real investment here. And I have to say, I would say the other forty-some-odd percent probably grew up here, moved away, and have come back to work in the schools. And so there are deep roots for Dartmouth folks in the Dartmouth Public Schools, and that's something we really want folks to think about. The school community is a vibrant one. I couldn't be any more thrilled to be here as your superintendent, and I just want to reemphasize how concerned I am about the idea of sitting down at a table with folks and cutting positions from the school system when they are direly needed. We need more positions, we need, we don't need fewer positions. For those who speak of class size, we, we had some real conversation about the importance of small class size. I recently had a conversation with a high school-age student who was able to share with me the importance of class size to her, and able to very explicitly share that when she's in one of her math classes, there are, it's a large math class, and she feels that she gets less direct support from her teacher, and not a criticism of the teacher, just certainly a remark about how it's more uncomfortable to ask for help and to get that sort of one-on-one support when you're in a larger class size, and then spoke directly to another class she's in that has fewer students, and how much more comfortable that is for her. So this is real, this is real for our students, it's real for our educators, we know that. And I know there's research out there about class size on both sides of things, but class size does matter. I mean, personal relationships and those that were spoken about earlier are very, are critical to, to any school system, and certainly important here in Dartmouth.
Do you want to add anything, Jim?
I think, well, I guess what I would add is, obviously, we're going to go, you know, across the hall and start a bigger discussion with other boards, and, you know, I think that we feel strongly about asking for what we need, and we think that everything we've brought forward is necessary. And so hopefully, we can find a way to get there and fund this, but we understand that it's not going to be an easy process, and, but we're prepared to advocate on behalf of the kids.
Thank you so much. I'm going to see if my colleagues have any questions, and they were going to sort of adjourn into that.
I think we probably need to, I mean, it's six-twenty-three. I'm not really sure we have time for Q and A yet, because once we get started on that, we'll get going.
Great. Well, that was fantastic.
We'll save that for after.
Yeah, we'll save it for after. Okay, so I will entertain a motion, thank you, to adjourn into joint session with the select board and the finance committee to return into open session at a later point. So moved. Any discussion, roll call?
Kathleen, excuse me, Kathleen Amrell?
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins?
Yes.
Elizabeth Coughlin?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm going to bring in my computer.
Powerful.
We'll break our case.
Thank you.
So one of the things that we really made sure to put into place was a formal curriculum review cycle. And so in that review cycle, we're consistently reviewing and revising our curriculum, and part of that means looking at our curriculum materials. And the budget obviously becomes an important part of the cycle, because as we look at having to continuously assure that we have the highest quality materials in front of our students, we know that research-based curriculum ages out, it becomes newer and better, and as we learn more and do better, technology obviously plays a huge role in all of that. And we have to be fiscally responsible, where we can't just sort of let it go and let it go, and find ourselves in a spot where multiple areas of the curriculum need revision or review at the same time. And so that cyclical piece that our teams, at the elementary level, we have curriculum teams in all four core academic areas, and then the secondary level, Ross has worked with re-teachers by department, and so we're consistently looking at that. But we have to be cognizant and aware that materials cost money, and so we want to make sure we're putting, you know, high-quality, research-based materials in front of our kids. We have to have a budgetary focus on that as well.
Yeah, so the only part I would add is that by including this in the budget, it allows us to not only be transparent, but also strategic, right? As the high school principal for five years, prior to being in the position I'm in now, I can say that we haven't adequately invested at the secondary level in high-quality instructional materials, and so this is an important piece of investing, not only in our students, but in our educators as well, to make sure that they have the resources they need to do the job on a daily basis.
And I do want to just add that this will be incorporated into our strategic plan. And so we know that this is a need here in Dartmouth. There's, there's no doubt about it. It actually was one of the first things coming in as a new superintendent that I took note of. It was glaringly obvious that we hadn't invested in curriculum materials, although we did adopt a new math program, and Katie, if you want to just mention the implementation of that program.
Sure. So we did bring in, at the elementary level, bridges and mathematics. We were able to acquire that throughout the pandemic, and then the coaches really became an integral part of making sure that our teachers have the professional development they needed, because not only is it important that our kids have the materials in front of them, it's important that our teachers have the knowledge base to make sure that they can use those materials to the, to the most efficacy they can. So that PD part of it, as Dr. Seif McGuire alluded to, is a really, is just, is just as important, I would say, probably argue more important, to make sure that our educators have the background and have the information that they need, because a tool is a tool, and it has to be research-based, but the person who's delivering and using that tool has to have the, the background and the knowledge to be able to use the tool effectively. Thank you.
I'm going to invite Jonathan up to talk about operational and instructional technology.
Good evening. I brought electronic versions of mine to demonstrate visually. When you think of technology, you look just under two areas, operational technology and instructional technology. When we look at operational technology, there's six people in the department, myself included, and we maintain all of the, the switches and network equipment, as well as the Wi-Fi, become essential as part of the learning process. The thousands of computers, the Chromebooks, desktops, laptops, printers, servers. We also maintain all the data initiatives, like state reporting and student information system, and pretty much any systems touch upon the data system, so they know what students log in as and their names and such. Also, thousands of other items, whether they be iPads, electronic whiteboards, or assistive technology devices all around the district, as well as maintaining a big, hot item, which is network security and security in general, when it comes to protecting from viruses, ransomware, malware, and such. So we have the systems that protect that, as well as the intercom system, the phone system, and the security camera systems, which keep an eye on things. We also pipe that through to the police department, so they can have eyes in the school, if necessary, to protect our students. When we look at instructional technology, it's really the core of educational technology now. The backbone is the operational, but the instructional technology, we have instructional technology specialists in every school. We're trying to fill one position at the high school. They cover things like digital literacy standards, computer science and such in the classroom, as well as digital citizenship, instructional practice, professional development for teachers. Really, they, they're there to support the investment we've made in thousands of dollars worth of equipment. I was the piece of that pie that said "other," like the player to be named later, that was Little Piece. And as Mr. Kylie mentioned, about the two-hundred thousand dollars, it's important to note that we have not taken, in my time here, we have not taken a bond out for purchasing technology. We've maintained a purchasing process, which I feel is a better investment, because it's able to, you're able to keep up with that, and that's what that, that two-hundred thousand dollars was, is to maintain purchases in electronic whiteboards, additional Chromebooks. The kids use the Chromebooks hard, they, they use them to the fullest extent. We talked about, Ms. Pfeo mentioned, the investment we make in software. These students are using it day and night, so they're great investments, and the Chromebooks they use, we, we try to maintain them and keep them up, fix them as they break, replace them as they needed. A few years ago, we were able to acquire an ECF grant, which was about a half a million dollars for Chromebooks, that was nice, and we're always keeping our eye out for that, too. Recently, Dr. Joe Biden had mentioned about cybersecurity money that's being available to Massachusetts, so we're keeping an eye on that, so we can enhance our cybersecurity. So that's what technology does, so I just wanted to share with you just a short synopsis of technology.
Thank you. And now we have Laurie Deniesio is going to come up and talk about another position that you saw, that of the behavior specialist.
So this is in a wish list. If it were a wish list, it would be far, far longer. This is a need we have currently in our district. This year, we're seeing a real spike in significant behavioral concerns, especially among our youngest learners. Since September, we've had to make four referrals to more therapeutic placements for students, because we just don't have the services and supports within our district to allow them to access the curriculum. Dartmouth is not alone in this trend. Across the state, lots of communities are facing this issue and trying to problem-solve it. Currently, we use a consultant when our building-based teams feel like that they have exhausted their own tools and strategies. However, this comes at a great cost, as consultation is usually ongoing, it's not a one-visit-and-done, it's a reoccurring, a reoccurring cost for us. So hiring our own staff would help us to build internal capacity and really support our students where they are in our classrooms, our students and our teachers, in real time.
And I just want to add that I noticed, when I was looking at last year's proposed budget, these were positions that were actually advocated for in last year's budget, and I'm hearing that there is truly a great need for this particular position, and maybe even more than one of them. So obviously, we're coming to you asking for one, just as, as a starting point, but one of the other things about depending on a consultant is you're on their schedule rather than ours, and I definitely have seen that that has caused just some, I would say, difficulties at the building-based level while we're waiting for somebody to, and the person is wonderful, the person who comes in, so it's not about their skill level, but it is about us having to be responsive to somebody else's schedule, and we all know that our students don't act on somebody else's schedule, so. And now Ross is going to talk about the ESL position.
So we are required to provide a free and appropriate public education for all students, including our multilingual learner students.
Okay, I would like to reconvene our open session for this school committee meeting of December 11th. Roll call, Kate?
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin.
Here.
Great, and when we last adjourned, we were at the end of the budget fiscal year '25 presentation by Mr. Kylie and friends. And I believe we're at the point where we're opening it up for questions and discussion. So I turn it over to my colleagues, Dr. Jenkins.
So, you know, I made a point in the joint meeting, and I do think we need to think about, you know, putting our money where our mouth is and committing some of our school choice money because we are sitting on a large reserve. And it's good to have reserves, but at the same point in time, right, we're, we have a lot there. And so, to me, the technology, $200,000, and the high quality instructional materials of $150,000, which are additions to our budget this year, they're definitely needed. But I think we should fund those out of school choice as an example of us sort of doing our part to pick it up. It's very needed. I'm not at all questioning the need for those things. But I think we, we need to sort of do our best to try to meet the town. And, and to be honest, if we don't pass an override, we may not be able to do those things. And we may be looking at that money for other things. But for now, as the plan A, hoping that things go well, I think we should move those to, onto school choice funding. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I certainly agree. I brought it up at the meeting. You know, I think in order to move forward and convince this, this town and the people in it about, about the even premise of an override, I think we need to show that we're doing our due diligence on this side to help, you know, to support the town as well and take some of that financial burden off of, off the town and bring it over to a fund that we have available to us.
I agree.
Yeah, I would, I would agree as well with that. And thank you for bringing that up, Shannon.
Could I?
Yeah.
So just, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree that those funds, that that would be a good use of those funds. However, I do want to note that this is not the forever solution to that issue. Clearly, the technology replacement article is a recurring expense that needs to have a home. For 12 years, it was, the home was as a line item, a separate line item in the annual operating budget that was funded every year, without question. And last year, it came into question and was eliminated. That has been a problem for us, but if, if we don't find a source of continued funding long-term, that will be a much bigger problem. We won't be able to operate without, without those funds. So I don't disagree. It's a good use of the funds on a short-term basis, but we have to have a plan moving forward.
No, I certainly agree with you, Mr. Kylie. You know, it's a fine line. I know Mr. McGinnis was talking about how you could look at individual chrome books or... Yeah, there's, there's certainly two ways to look at everything, right? But I, I do think that we do have the school choice available to us. And, you know, I think moving forward, maybe the, the school department, maybe the school committee should look to creating some kind of financial policy for the school choice and uses for the school choice. Obviously, I think we're all in agreement. We can say that we're all in agreement that it should be one-time expend- expenses. And that's where, that's where I can see what you're saying, Mr. Kylie, that that's not technology. $200,000 is not a one-time expense because it's needed every year. So, you know, I think for this year or for FY '25, I think it's a good opportunity to show some goodwill. But I think moving forward, you're absolutely right, Mr. Kylie, that I think that it's either, like we had a conversation earlier, that it either needs to be absorbed into the operating budget or more than likely, it really should go back into capital because it is over $10,000. And I disagree with what Mr. McGinnis was saying. And it's got a life expectancy of at least five years plus.
Dr. Jenkins?
So, I mean, I guess this is kind of more of a theoretical question. But at, but at what point does the non-recurring revenue become a recurring revenue? I mean, how many years have we had school choice now? Four, five?
Uh, let's see. No, I think, I think, yes, six.
A long time. It's been a long, long, long time, right? So at some point, right, if you're getting the same expense, like, you know what I mean? At what point does that non-recurring revenue, do you actually treat it like recurring revenue? The other thing I think we should discuss, so either we treat it like that and we can put some of these things on it, or if we don't, right, the town's position is, I don't disagree with them. We don't, we don't return cash. They fund all of our capital out of their free cash, right? Sure, but then we have essentially what is a non-recurring source of cash that we should then use to fund our, fund some of our capital needs out of. So I think we're past the point, we have $2 million in there now. We also have other stabilization funds that I'm not going to talk about that. That money's just been sitting there for, I don't know how long, right? The full day kindergarten, which, full day kindergarten's not going to go away, right? Full day kindergarten is part of what we do, right? So we have these sort of stashes of money that I think we have to have serious conversations about. It's nice to have, you know, some sock drawers with money in them. But when we're asking taxpayers to pony up money to support us, we have to show that we're doing everything we can. And I think that school choice money, it's important for us to either commit it to things or commit it to capital rather than letting it accumulate.
But I think it, I mean, my understanding is that it, it has accumulated because we were able to reimburse through SRFunding. And so some of the things that were funded, some of them were trying to build into the budget. But there are still things that are sort of needed, but at a different tier to the necessity of what, of the items that we're putting, that we're proposing for, for, for the budget that we just discussed. And so there's that sort of question as to...
I mean, if, if I could add, I mean, to be transparent, we, we actually used school choice funds in a, in a way...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I would like to reconvene our open session for this school committee meeting of December 11th. Roll call, Kate?
Kathleen Amaral?
Here.
Chris Oliver?
Here.
Shannon Jenkins?
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin?
Here.
Great, and when we last adjourned, we were at the end of the budget fiscal year '25 presentation by Mr. Kylie and friends. And I believe we're at the point where we're opening it up for questions and discussion. So I turn it over to my colleagues, Dr. Jenkins.
So, you know, I made a point in the joint meeting, and I do think we need to think about, you know, putting our money where our mouth is and committing some of our school choice money because we are sitting on a large reserve. And it's good to have reserves, but at the same point in time, right, we're, we have a lot there. And so, to me, the technology 200,000 and the high quality instructional materials of 150,000, which are additions to our budget this year, they're definitely needed. But I think we should fund those out of school choice as an example of us sort of doing our part to pick it up. It's very needed. I'm not at all questioning the need for those things. But I think we, we need to sort of do our best to try to meet the town. And, and to be honest, if we don't pass an override, we may not be able to do those things. And we may be looking at that money for other things. But for now, as the plan A, hoping that things go well, I think we should move those to, onto school choice funding. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I certainly agree. I brought it up at the meeting. You know, I think in order to move forward and convince this, this town and the people in it about, about the even premise of an override, I think we need to show that we're doing our due diligence on this side to help, you know, to support the town as well and take some of that financial burden off of, off the town and bring it over to a fund that we have available to us.
I agree.
Yeah, I would, I would agree as well with that. And thank you for bringing that up, Shannon.
Could I?
Yeah.
So just, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree that those funds, that that would be a good use of those funds. However, I do want to note that this is not the forever solution to that issue. Clearly, the technology replacement article is a recurring expense that needs to have a home. For 12 years, it was, the home was as a line item, a separate line item in the annual operating budget that was funded every year without question. And last year, it came into question and was eliminated. That has been a problem for us, but if, if we don't find a source of continued funding long-term, that will be a much bigger problem. We won't be able to operate without, without those funds. So I don't disagree. It's a good use of the funds on a short-term basis, but we have to have a plan moving forward.
No, I certainly agree with you, Mr. Kylie. You know, it's a fine line. I know Mr. McGinnis was talking about how you could look at individual chrome books or... Yeah, there's, there's certainly two ways to look at everything, right? But I, I do think that we do have the school choice available to us. And, you know, I think moving forward, maybe the, the school department, maybe the school committee should look to creating some kind of financial policy for the school choice and uses for the school choice. Obviously, I think we're all in agreement, we can say that we're all in agreement that it should be one-time expend, expenses. And that's where, that's where I can see what you're saying, Mr. Kylie, that, that's not technology. $200,000 is not a one-time expense because it's needed every year. So, you know, I think for this year or for FY '25, I think it's a good opportunity to show some goodwill. But I think moving forward, you're absolutely right, Mr. Kylie, that I, I think that it's either, like we had a conversation earlier, that it either needs to be absorbed into the operating budget or more than likely, it really should go back into capital because it is over $10,000. And I, I disagree with what Mr. McGinnis was saying. And it's got a life expectancy of at least five years plus.
Dr. Jenkins?
So, I mean, I guess this is kind of more of a theoretical question, but it, but at what point does the non-recurring revenue become a recurring revenue? I mean, how many years have we had school choice now? Four, five?
Uh, let's see, no, I think, I think, yes, six.
A long time. It's been a long, long, long time, right? So at some point, right, if you're getting the same expense, like, you know what I mean? At what point does that non-recurring revenue, do you actually treat it like recurring revenue? The other thing I think we should discuss, so either we treat it like that and we can put some of these things on it, or if we don't, right, the town's position is, I don't disagree with them, we don't, we don't return cash. They fund all of our capital out of their free cash, right? Sure, but then we have essentially what is a non-recurring source of cash that we should then use to fund our, fund some of our capital needs out of. So I think we're past the point, we have $2 million in there now. We also have other stabilization funds that I'm not going to talk about that. That money's just been sitting there for, I don't know how long, right? The, the full day kindergarten, which, full day kindergarten's not going to go away, right? Full day kindergarten is part of what we do, right? So we have these sort of stashes of money that I think we have to have serious conversations about. It's nice to have, you know, some sock drawers with money in them, but when we're asking taxpayers to pony up money to support us, we have to show that we're doing everything we can. And I think that school choice money, it's important for us to either commit it to things or commit it to capital rather than letting it accumulate.
I think it, I mean, my understanding is that it, it has accumulated because we were able to reimburse through ESSER funding. And so some of the things that were funded, some of them were trying to build into the budget. But there are still things that are sort of needed, but at a different tier to the necessity of what, of the items that we're putting, that we're proposing for, for, for the budget that we just discussed. And so there's that sort of question as to...
I mean, if, if I could add, I mean, to be transparent, we, we actually used school choice funds in a, in a way that was pretty much for recurring expenses. When we established school choice, it, it became the foundation for our, for our gearing up to a one-to-one initiative. And that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't had the school choice funds. It just so happened that then came the pandemic, came grant monies that helped support our technology in the district that then lessened the need to rely on school choice for that, hence the buildup of school choice funds. Certainly, if you were going to build, build something like the technology replacement into school choice or curric, high-quality curriculum instructional materials into school choice on an annual basis, that would eat up more than half of what the school choice funds. That may be a very good use of the funds. I think it would be a good investment. But you are gonna, you know, you're gonna gradually, you know, use up those funds that way. So it, it's certainly something to consider and, you know, based on your feedback, I think we can, we can bring it back and make some adjustments when we talk about it again.
I just got one more, one more thought. So, Mr. Kylie, you said it's around $2 million currently in school choice? And what do we typically, based on our past enrollments, the past couple of years for our, our school choice numbers, what are we averaging per year in reimbursement in school choice?
Yeah, about 650 to 700,000 on average, so a little more than 650.
I don't know.
Page, page 99 of your budget packet has all of that on there.
I didn't get, I didn't get to page 99, Dr. Jenkins.
I just searched, searched school choice.
With that said, I think I would be up to look at, for this year, to bring, get the, and it's not for me to tell you what to do with it, but, you know, if we have to, I would be comfortable bringing it down to looking at a million, spending a million dollars out, million dollars out of it and leaving a million in there. And that's, that's not for discussion. I don't want to discuss it today, but that's just my thought.
So I'm just, can I just read what you have here, right? Because the balance right now is 2.3 million.
Yep.
We got, we're projecting 660 in revenue, 891 in total expenses, leaving us with 2.1. And some of those are capital that you have in here, right? That we still have 350 that we're holding in there for the stadium, which God knows if that's ever going to get done. So, right, does that count? I don't know. 200,000 for the LMC upgrade, another 200,000 for technology. So there's $750,000 in sort of capital in there, which, which is good, but, right, there's still 2.1 million dollars in there, even after all of that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, just going back to, you know, bringing these stories to the community, you know, it's, it's a lot of work. We, we, we don't have a, you know, a communications team that is able to kind of dedicate. But, but perhaps with partnering with DCTV and, and the other, the high school even, to talk about, to have these conversations, to really illustrate, you know, what the day in the life, what a classroom looks like, you know, the constant scaffolding and differentiation that happens within a classroom and that individualized instruction that, that is, is both a requirement and also something that our students are, all students are benefiting from in co-taught classrooms and that sort of thing. So, you know, visiting the schools, well, having the educators, you know, welcome you in and do some tours of the school and, and just breaking it down to tell those stories about a day in the life and going through perhaps all 102 pages of this budget proposal and spending, you know, a half hour talking about each one, each item with that ELL teacher, you know, what, what the behavioral specialist does. You hear the word behavior and that kind of triggers, but perhaps there's some, some great stories, the personal anecdotes that can talk about what, what, what that means for a student, for them to access the curriculum, to regulate themselves, to be part of, to make friends, to be perceived in a way that others understand that perhaps it's a communication or a mental health deficit. And how a student kind of can outgrow the need for that service and really utilize the skills that we talk about, providing teachers to provide instruction or to, to use some of the curriculum and that sort of thing. Students also learn those tools and, you know, I, I won't bring my son into this, but, you know, it could be a phrase that I use and that sort of resets my son who, who does benefit from those specific services. And so it's, you hear behavioral specialists, you're like, oh my goodness. So you, 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 you think, what kind of students do we have in our school? All of our students, you know, they learn from one another and they are more accepting and able to understand empathetic and just become those critical, highly communicative, critical thinkers that we talked about, the five tenants of what a student, what, what a student is that we, what we want to achieve. So just really bringing our storytelling to that next level would be something that I would love to see, which I'm sure is up your sleeve, I mean, part of your plan. But, but, you know, to beautifully illustrate the why behind those numbers. That's all I have.
So I just want to be clear, right? School, school employees cannot advocate for overrides, threats engaging in political activity during their time in their job. They cannot ask their students to engage in political activities during their time on their job. So there are things that we can do to talk about the good work that we do, but we do have to be very careful in what we ask our school employees to do on behalf of the override. As local employees, they are prohibited from doing that, so that's on us. That's, that's our job. That's what we do. So you can give us the material, but we've got to go out and tell the story.
And I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're happy to do that work. We've talked about visiting PTOs, we've talked about, you know, different organizations in town that we can visit. But it has to be, you know, Mr. Kylie can talk about numbers, but then we can talk about why that leads to the need for an override. Mr. Kylie can't, can't do that, right?
Agreed. Just one last piece. I, I do want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the different format at tonight's budget presentation here. I certainly, I don't know if my colleagues took notice of it, but I certainly do appreciate the different format from you and your administrative team. So thank you.
My too. I just want to thank my team because they did a great job. We really came together in a very short amount of time to put together what I think, what we hoped would tell the story of the budget. And I certainly appreciate what you're saying, Kathleen, about telling those anecdotal stories because even the story that I told about the student who shared how important class size was to her. I mean, those are the kinds of things that we really want to hear from our kids and our teachers directly. And as you said, Shannon, there was an article, Dr. Jenkins, there was an article in today's Globe, actually, about a school system that got into a little bit of hot water for using some of their school allocated resources to...
I know, because I have to take the state ethics training every year. A $50 bread socks ticket messes me up every time, man! But yes, they drill it into our heads about what we can and cannot do, for sure.
So we are aware, we had that conversation just today.
Thank you. Great. Anything else? All right. Well, thank you again for a great, great discussion and great presentation. I look forward to more of them, learning more and sharing more and really engaging with others in the community about this really critical topic. I'll move on to new business.
Sure.
And I will turn it over to you.
Yep, that sounds great. Thank you. So thankfully, it's a short update, so I know everybody's exhausted, but it's really hard to believe. Do you, I, every time I say this, my husband says, why is this so hard for you to believe? It's December 11th, really, but it is. The year is going by so quickly as we knew it would. But I just want to update you on sort of what's happening with the entry planning phase and because I think it's important, not only for the committee, but for the community and the school community to understand that this entry planning phase really is going to be critical in informing the next phase of the work that we're going to be doing regardless of the budget outcome. Because, you know, we still have students to serve regardless. We're going to certainly advocate, as you, as I hope you could see tonight, for what we need. But getting out into schools, talking to faculty, getting out into schools, talking to families and the community at large, I think I'm going to be joining a Rotary Club meeting at some point in the near future. All that's really important in telling the story of what our schools mean to our community. So you're going to be hearing more about that in the, again, the very near future. As far as personnel is, is concerned, I just, I, I feel like we're in pretty good shape right now. And here it is, December 11th. But you know, I'm always going to give that plug for substitute teachers because we never have enough. So if anybody, and the college students are home for a couple of months, so if you can get them to apply, that would be wonderful. I know that I have nieces home from college. If they're at UMass Hamhurst, I think they're home till February. So that's a good amount of time for, for our students to be out substitute teaching. And so I also wanted to let you know that we are, newcomer students here continue to thrive. Again, I can't thank Katie Paveo enough for, every day, I think she was out in one of the hotels today. Every day, she's out visiting and doing what she can to support the families. And our educators, I mean, I don't want to say it's been seamless, but they have done just such a tremendous job supporting our new students. And I just can't be any more thankful. And then when I think about the holiday season, I was over at the Potter School today and there were presents everywhere, you know, there were gift collections and just, I don't, I couldn't even see down in the office, she, the secretary there was so buried with presents. And she told me there were many more. And that's not just the Potter School, that's every school that I've seen here in Dartmouth. So there are food drives, there are clothing drives, I think we have coat, we have coat drives. Katie has coats still in, all over her office. So again, a generous community, clearly, that has, Dartmouth has shown itself to be a generous community during this holiday season. But I also just want to mention some accomplishments. Just this past Friday, I had the pleasure of attending the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Breakfast. Our food services department did a tremendous job preparing what was really just a wonderful spread of food, but recognizing the kids was really, it was really fun. And the kids were excited. We had our largest, Dartmouth had the largest class they've had receive the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship. They had 79 students earn the scholarship this year. Those are the kinds of things we want to continue to see increase. And then I had the pleasure of going to Freaky Friday this past Saturday afternoon. It was wonderful for anyone who got a chance to see it. The kids were so, are so tremendously talented. And it was probably about two and a half hours, and I have to say, I was paying attention. It was, it was funny. It was, the, the singers were, I mean, just, you, we could have been at a Broadway show. The set, just kudos to everybody involved in putting that on. I also, I didn't mention at the last meeting, but I also did go to the middle school musical as well. And that was wonderful as well, so you can see how the middle school is working to prepare the students for that next step along the way in their trajectory. And then finally, winter sports have started. Apparently, basketball premiered this evening. I hope they did well. I haven't heard anything yet. But I'm looking forward to seeing what the winter sports teams do here in Dartmouth. And I know there's still other things. I still haven't figured out the winter music scene in Dartmouth yet, but I'm sure that by the time March rolls around, I'll, I'll have a good idea of what goes on. So, yeah, it's been, it's been a busy month. It never stops. There's a lot of people out here and the school's doing really great work for kids, and you should be very proud.
Thank you.
Next report of the chair, I got nothing. And I don't know if my colleagues have anything that they want to share at this time.
They do not.
Right? So with that, I think we're, we're done. I will entertain...
Next meeting.
Oh, next meeting is, well, we may have a joint meeting. Next meeting.
January 8th.
January 8th, okay, which may be a, a joint session.
Sounds like the same setup.
I knew I scheduled my vacations right.
I will entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, roll call?
Nope.
No, we're done.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously for zero. Have a good night.
I always want to hold on that.